Welcome to the March 13, 2018, regular meeting of the Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with agendas presented or amended by the Planning Commission. The roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Wortman and Associates. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on a sign-on sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the Planning Commission, not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, PDAs, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting, please either be placed in silent mode or be turned off. The rule comments are in here, please.
Mr. Appahedian?
Here.
Ms. Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Faison?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Kuppa?
Here.
Mr. Zanzika?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Here.
Ms. Howell?
Here.
Quarter-mile president, I just, before we get into the meeting, I just want to make a quick announcement. If there's anybody in the room that's here for the board review for the assessing department, the meeting is not here, it's actually down the hallway. So if you're here for that, it's just down the hallway. So we will move on with item number two on the agenda, approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please? Motion by Mr. Faison, seconded by Mr. Tagle. Roll call, Ms. Ernie, please.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Ms. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Kuppa?
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Appahedian?
Yes. Item number three on the agenda, approval of the minutes for the February 27, 2018 meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Mr. Chairman, before you make a motion to approve, I'd like to make a correction to the minutes. The minutes reflected, I was here for the discussion on Old Forest Four in voting. I was excused by this commission, so I think the minutes reflect a vote of six zero, and I join Mr. Tagle and Zanzika in being absent.
Sure, yeah, Ms. Ernie, can you make that correction on the minutes?
I'll move to approve as amended.
Moved by Mr. Edmonds and seconded by Ms. Kuppa. Roll call, Ms. Ernie, please.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Kuppa?
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Upstein.
Mr. Appahedian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Item number four on the agenda, public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to make a public comment for an item that is not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we will move to item number five on the agenda, special use in preliminary site plan review. Public hearing, special use in preliminary site plan review, file number SUJPLN 2018-0001, proposed true hotel, northeast corner of Maple and Research, adjacent to I-75, parcel 88-20-26-326-025, section 26, currently zone GB, general business district. Mr. Carlton, I'm sorry, Mr. Carlton?
You're very welcome. Go to your place, Carlton, where you want to. Good evening. My name is Ben Carlisle, Carlisle Wortman Associates. I have a very brief presentation in regards to the application for you tonight. The applicant is True Hotel. They are proposing a five-story, 57-foot-tall, 124-room hotel. The site is located at the intersection or corner of Maple and I-75. Just for note, there is no on or off ramp off I-75, it is a bridge. This is Research Drive. Research Drive is a drive, is not a public or private road, it's actually considered a drive. The parcel is approximately two and a half acres in area. It was previously approved as a hotel, I believe it was a Holiday Inn, approved about three or four years ago. That application obviously was never built, however, the site plan does mirror that approved hotel almost exactly as to what was previously approved, the site. The Planning Commission members, we have reclassified hotels as special uses, so this does require a special use from the Planning Commission as well as preliminary site plan approval. As you can note, the site is outlined in red. Again, this is Maple Road to the bottom, this is I-75 over here off to the side. The outline is in red. The main building entry is located on the southern end of the site, it is a drop-off situation. It's worth noting that there's no access off Maple Road. The primary access is off of Research Drive, which is accessed from Maple in this location, and there is a secondary point of access, a cross-access to the parking lot to the north. So again, it utilizes the main existing roadway connection off Research Drive. As part of the application, the applicant proposes 141 parking spaces, which is over the parking requirement by seven, I think seven spaces over what is required by the zoning ordinance. The application applies or complies with all the bulk regulations of the city. It meets the front yard setback on Maple Road, it meets the front setback on Research Drive as well as I-75. In addition, it does comply with the open space requirement exceeds a 20% to 24%. It is compliant with regards to landscaping and lighting. The only recommendation we have is the applicant break up the row of parking in front of the building or to the side of the building with a parking lot island as required by the ordinance. You can see from the rendering, this is the elevation that actually fronts, you'll see on Maple Road, this is the primary elevation on Maple Road. This is the elevation that is adjacent to I-75. The applicant proposes masonry, mostly a masonry with some, with the paneling, and these are EPIS-colored panels going up the side of the building, and the applicant architect is here to describe the architectural program in more details. This is the backside of the building or the north side of the building, so if you're coming south on 75, this is the view that you will see. This is the elevation from Research Drive that you'll see also coming up on Maple Road. This is a proposed rendering. This is if you're standing essentially at the corner of Research Drive in Maple looking into the site. This is the main drop-off area in front of the building. It's actuated with a canopy, metal canopy over the drop-off area. Again, there is a required landscape screen of a screen wall in front and the five-story building that fronts on Maple. Hotel, again, was, is required as a special use. The reason why the Planning Commission and the city council made this a special use is that they wanted to be a, ensure that there is a architectural review of material quality that's consistent with what's anticipated or required in the master plan and zoning ordinance, ensure that the use doesn't oversaturate the market considering the difficulty in retrofitting these buildings. Obviously, five-star hotels are difficult to retrofit, and the concern is, what happens if the market's oversaturated and these don't perform? What do we do with the building after it's done? And lastly, it's reviewed by a special use to ensure that the development does not negatively impact adjacent properties. Again, that's primarily a concern for location adjacent to residential. This is in a commercial-oriented area where there's no surrounding residential, so that concern somewhat gets removed. The applicant was asked to provide additional information in regards to these three points. They're here tonight, they can speak in more detail in regards to these three points moving forward. As I noted, this is a special use. A special use allows for a land use review on a case-by-case basis to ensure that the design, it meets the required standards, and it has additional site and use restrictions if placed on by the Planning Commission. It does allow the Planning Commission to do a case-by-case review on this specific application itself, and also allows the Planning Commission to place specific conditions on the application. However, those conditions have to have a rational relationship to public health, safety, and welfare. I do want to note that it does require a public hearing tonight from the Planning Commission. In regards to special use, there are specific standards that the Planning Commission is asked to consider in review of the application. These are outlined in section 9.03 of the zoning ordinance, and these speak to compatibility with adjacent uses, compatibility with the master plan, potential traffic impact, the impact on public services, compliance with zoning ordinance standards, impacting the overall environment, as well as any special use standards or specific use standards that supplies in hotels. Again, tonight, the Planning Commission can either grant or deny the request, table action, or grant requests with special conditions on it. In our review of the special use standards, we do find that it does meet the required standards. The use for the site is a commercial use and consistent with a commercial orientation and office uses on Maple Road. The applicant has designed the site and proposed a use that does mitigate impacts upon adjacent properties. Thirdly, the hotel, the area surrounding use is a married and varied mix of land uses, and the five-star hotel is compatible with those adjacent surrounding uses. As explained by the applicant, the hotel will add a desired service to the area. The Maple Road area plan outlines a need for redevelopment and reoccupation of vacant parcels, and this is another new development on Maple Road. And lastly, the hotel will have no greater impact on public services than would be generally expected of a permitted use in the same zoning classification. So in summary, we do recommend preliminary site plan approval, as well as special use approval, provided that the applicant added Tree Island into that double row of 12 spaces west of the building. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. Any questions for Mr. Carlisle?
Could you go back to the slide, the first slide with the three bullet points for the hotel? Yeah.
These ones?
Right. So the second bullet point, that such use does not oversaturate the market, especially considering the difficulty in retrofitting hotels for future uses. Have you been provided, or we've been provided, any information that substantiates that?
There was a brief statement in my report provided by the applicant, and I can read it directly what they had expressed to me. I'm just reading directly from a quote from the applicant. "The hotel we made a block in planning construction, providing a very durable structure that will stand up for years and years. The owner of this hotel holds the properties for a long time and is not intending to flip this property after a few years. The owner is willing to spend their money for good durable materials to make a building last and look good for years to come, including senior living. This hotel will have an elevator or apartments."
What about the first part? Oversaturate the market?
And that's really a question for the applicant to answer. They didn't specifically ask it, address it in...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Carlisle?
I thought, in the report, it says, the applicant's response had one, two, three points in it, if you look on page 18. And the first point, the applicant said, market conditions are providing the need of additional rooms in this area.
But they didn't provide additional information as to how they can...
No substantiation, right? Yes.
They all brought a number of hotels in southeast Michigan and Troy itself, and they can surely answer that question.
Any other comments, questions for Mr. Carlisle? If not, the applicant is here, and may step up to the mic, please, and present the question that we might have at that time and might ask after the presentation. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners, I'm Kenny Cozza, President of Group Ten Management. Here with me...
And I'm Dave Hunter for PEA, the Civil Engineer for the project. And we have Nate, and I, forgive me, I let him pronounce his last name.
His last name is pronounced Lefeholes, Nate Lefeholes. I'm the architect on the project.
Base four. So I'm not sure where you'd like us to start on this project? Would you want to hear it from engineering, architects in regards to the materials used? You want me to speak in regards to saturations of hotels in Troy?
All of the above.
All of the above? Well, for us, the True brand is a very unique, cool product that Hilton just launched a little bit over a year ago. They currently have over a couple hundred signed, it's just had such incredible momentum, they call it a Trunami. For us, you know, what this hotel is for Hilton, it's, the Hampton brand was a mid-scale brand for them. But what has happened with Hampton, it's done so well, it's done phenomenal, that it's moved up into the luxury limited service brand. So Hilton realized that they needed a place in the mid-scale brand to compete with, you know, the Comfort Inns, the Fairfields of the world, that they felt that the mid-scale brand hasn't been reinvented in a long time, that they knew that a brand like Comfort, regardless of what they do, it's not, they would never be able to accomplish what True could coming right out of the box, being all brand-new products from the ground up. So our, going with Hilton's philosophy and their success, and our success with the Hampton we currently have in the market, we're the Hampton Inn and Suites owner, we're the Hilton Garden Inn owner, we realize that our Hampton has done such phenomenal, it's charging $199+ that we are now in the luxury segment. So we're really just building this as an extension of our current success of our product. We wish our Hampton was 200 rooms, 300 rooms, and right now, it's 122 rooms. Our Hilton Garden Inn was 114, we wanted it to be 150. We only built it 114 because we didn't have enough parking, unfortunately. So this is really just an extension of our current success. It's also a compliment to our current brands. It also kind of combats the market, it protects us. We are Hilton dominant in this market, we want to sustain our coverage with Hilton, and we want to protect our investments. And so, really, we feel that this is a perfect market, highest best use for this area on Maple and Stevenson. We think it's going to be iconic for the city of Troy, being five stories above the highway. It's going to act as a billboard for the community. We also feel that, I mean, in terms of all the other uses that could have been here, this property used to be a Chinese buffet. And so, you know, we feel that the hotel here is a phenomenal asset, it's going to be a great amenity for the app now that's moving into United Shore Building, and so we don't feel at all that we are risking anything by building this brand. And, you know, just to make you guys feel comfortable, we're not first-time hotelers. We currently have 13 hotels open and operating right now, we have three additional in the pipeline. We're a very diversified company, hotel's not just what we do. We own about 20,000 parking spaces, shopping centers, we're in the gas station business. So we're really able to set up, to handle the, you know, up and down cycles. Hilton themselves has vetted us tremendously, and they don't give these flags to anybody. We signed a 20-year agreement with them, and so, you know, and same thing with our banks who finance us. If they had any doubt, and we had any doubt, we would not take a chance. We know how well we're going to do here, and we love the city of Troy, which is why we actually will be in front of you pretty soon with another hotel proposal, so just forewarning you, you know, which is also a different segment. You know, this product is obviously aiming for all age groups, but it really is millennial-driven in its design, which, you know, some people, they get confused when I say millennial. You know, people like the fresh, edgy, cool, hip style, that's why I say it's good for all age groups. This price point is going to be between $100 and $120. So we feel it's going to be great for the youth for that reason, that's why I say millennial. The rooms are much more efficient and dynamic, they're smaller, and they don't even have desks. The idea of this hotel is that we want to drive you to the lobby, which is broken up into four zones. We have a working zone where you want to come down and work, we have a lounging zone, we have a play area that has foosball and ping pong and things of that nature, and then we have an eating and drinking area. We don't have a bar, but we will have seal-serve beer and wine as well. So, you know, that's the thing that people are looking for right now, they want to see kind of activity when they come into a hotel. It's almost like the same concept. When you go to a restaurant and you see an empty restaurant, you get nervous to eat that restaurant. So when you go to a hotel and you see life in the lobby, you're really excited to be staying there. So that's the really cool thing about developing a mid-scale product by Hilton, and that's where this True is evolving, turned into. So I don't know if I covered all your questions and fears, if there's anything else you want me to address, I'd be happy to.
Thank you. Well, just, can we just, how about we just take, cover all the points, architectural and engineering, and then we'll, we'll do the questions after.
So I can answer any questions you have about the civil engineering part of it, the five feet outside of the building. We're more than happy to accommodate Ben's request on the parking recommendation, the additional two stalls to be eliminated for landscaping, so, and the site is fairly straightforward in terms of utilities and stormwater, and there is a detention facility off-site that handles all the stormwater for this site, and we can answer any questions.
Okay. Go ahead, Nate.
Raise this up a little bit.
All right, so I'm Nate from Base Four. All we do is hotels. We do hotels all over the world, mainly the United States is our focus, and currently we have more hotels in the Hilton pipeline than anybody else in the United States. So we know this brand, this is a fun brand, this is an exciting brand. As you guys noted the first time that we sent the plans in, it's a primarily drive-it EPIS product, which I know is kind of scary, and that's one of the things that Hilton tries to stick to, but also understands that when it comes into a city that's looking for more of a masonry, long-lasting product, that we can swap it out as long as we're able to keep those colors and keep that brand alive. Like any other chain-style product, what True wants to do is it wants to be identifiable. You're driving down the highway, you see that wedge-shaped thing, that's a very iconic piece, that's a True. You see those colors, that's a True. And then just the colors in general, you know, they're fun, they're energetic, they kind of capture the youth that Kenny was talking about, he did a good job kind of capitalizing on what they're trying to do, they're trying to get that lower-price paint, the younger generation with all the technology features, and just a really good-looking product. It's a fun product, you get excited when you see it. They're exciting to put up, and I've now walked probably three or four finished products because they're just starting to roll out in terms of finalizing. People are really excited about them, towns are really excited about them, I'm excited about them, if you can't tell, so. But we did bring some samples in for you guys to touch and feel, kind of, I can walk you through the different types of products that are on there. Yeah, any other questions you got, just let me know, so.
Thank you. Yeah.
Could you walk us through those products?
Sure, sure. Well, I got a box here, I can come on the desk.
Set this down a little, scratch in the glass.
You could be able to hold the material up and then point to what it is.
Okay, yeah, that works. Well, I'll start off with the ones in front. These panels right here, which I'll stick two around, these are what they call, it's like a polycarbonate, so these are Trespa panels, what they're called, that's the manufacturer's name. It's a real high durable, it's a plastic, and what you're going to see this product is right here, so on this entry. They wanted, you know, they had EPIS on there a long time ago, I should say, and then they went to this, I don't know, something that's going to stand up to the weather in terms of abuse at a low level. Drive is a great product, it holds up well, but it does much better when it's way up here and no one's banging on it. We've done movie theaters in the past where kids stand in line and they put pencils in it as they're waiting, or jab their keys in it, or the mailman gets a little crazy, you know, we don't want that. This product here is a good durable stuff, goes on a clip-type system, goes over like a metal, metal, like a clip, I don't know, think of resilient channel and drywall on top of that kind of deal. But Trespa's a manufacturer, it's a good hearty stuff. Yes, your elevation said they were metal panels. Are these not metal panels? No, this is the Trespa system. They could be metal panels, the alternative to that is what they call an ACM metal product, which is just, that's what it is, it's a metal panel.
I'm just looking up, your elevations do quote, they call these metal panels, yeah.
Okay, so E or is an option in the prototype.
Okay.
So next up to that would be the brick. So what I did is I picked a couple samples from Belden Brick, which is a very well-known brick manufacturer, I love them, they've got a great website. So the three different colors we have are the black, which is capturing the kind of iconic black of the building, and you'll notice that the wedge here, this is going to be EPIS, so I'll take that, but it ties into this band, and this is very, can we go to the front elevation? Yeah, can you see how it does the step here? This is True, that's what they like to do. They come out here, they drop it down, they kind of make this element pop in the middle. So all we've done is swapped out the black EPIS in this location around the building for this black brick right here. Okay, next up to that would be this down here. Now, this is called the, I can't read my thing down here. Well, it's a monarch size, but it's a landmark, so it's meant to capture the same color that they use on the Trues that they like. This is going to be not this size, though, we're going to use the jumbo brick style, and that'll give it just a little different texture on the bottom, because what True likes to do is they like to do more of a wide EPIS, so we think that this jumbo brick in this color is going to look, you know, pretty snazzy on the bottom of that one. So that'll just kind of follow around in these different points, around the livery at the back. And last would be this white brick, and this is meant to capture the building, which is typically a white brick, or a white color on top, and that would fill in this whole entire pop-up here, which kind of makes that stand out, and then to get to more of a, this is about 78% EPIS, or brick, this is about 60% brick on the sides, and in the back's about 75%. So that gets it up to that level before we would start any actual EPIS on the building, which would be at the top. Last but not least, the EPIS that we do have on the building, this color green mountain fog, so that was just meant to complement the white brick at the top, give it a little different so it didn't look like a sea of white up there, and then...
Show us where that's on the...
Yeah, that's these portions right here.
Oh, okay.
Right way at the top, kind of follows it all the way around the building.
Well, that's EPIS.
Yeah, it's EPIS, yeah. And then the last is this right here, which is the True flag. So this is, this is the iconic True piece, you know, that's their wedge. I've done, I don't know, obviously, 10 EPISs on the book, and if you're going to get anything, or not get anything away with Hilton, it's getting rid of that flag. That's what their, that's their signature, that's one of their elements between that and this middle portion right here. So one thing I'll say about the EPIS, which I never got to those, we'll get to those next, is what they're using is a Drive It Synergy Series. Now, EPIS has come a long way back from the 80s, which, when I was born, so I'm not going to go too far back, but it used to be kind of a quick, cheap product that just fell apart really fast, you know, people, developers of them. But it's come a long way, and Drive It Synergy Series comes with, you know, a rain screen, not a rain screen background, but a fluidipide moisture barrier, it gives you your CI that you need around the building for your insulation, it's just a lot better product than it used to be back in the day, and it holds up very, very well. So it's not, don't be scared off by the EPIS, because it's come a long way, it's a fairly durable product.
Does it scratch?
Does it scratch? I mean, it would puncture if you were to...
No, the samples would just pass. If you click one against the other, there's a scratch mark on it.
Oh, being up this high, you know, unless a bird was across it, or somebody's going to throw something up there, A, you probably wouldn't see the scratch, B, I mean, it's painted, so it can always be touched up if it needed to be, so.
Yeah, Mr. Stone.
Not a question really to comment, so we softened the beaches a little bit with Nate, we kind of, when we saw the first rendition of the elevations, it was very much driven by EPIS, there was a lot more higher proportion of EPIS on the first renditions that we saw, and we indicated that we're looking for higher-quality materials and whatnot. So Nate revised the elevations significantly to dramatically reduce the amount of EPIS on the site plan. So if it seems like this is a very EPIS-centric presentation, it's because we explained the need for...
Thank you.
it's because we explained the need for more quality materials, and that's kind of where Nate's coming from. I just wanted to provide some context, why, why you were handed EFS and why we, why we've been kind of focusing on how there's not that much of it.
Yeah. Sorry. Thank you, Brett, for saying that. One of the things that Hilton likes to do, specifically in this product, is they don't like you to mess with it. There's other products, the Hamptons, the more luxury brands. They have, I'll say, a lot more artistic or architectural freedom, or you can just kind of really manage the building for the site. Trues, they like to look like trues. I mean, that's, they like you to use that EFS. So one of the things Brent helped me was coming back and saying, hey, you know, here's the requirement. So we can go back to Hilton and then say, hey, this is why we're changing what we're doing. So last but not least, these bands. So what I have is paint samples because I didn't have, couldn't get the colors on the EFS. But the bright colors are what defines, are what defines true. And that's what makes it pop. So these are Benjamin Moore colors that represent this texture. And what these bands are is they sit back into kind of the brick. And that's the whole point, is that they're supposed to kind of set back into it a little bit. And they run all the way up the building. And again, with the wedge, these are kind of some of the signature elements that True really likes to have on their building. And so it'll just be in plain, or I shouldn't say in plain, with the EFS elements there, but it'll be set back to the brick to kind of give it a little break up on the facade. Because I also know that, you know, this is a long expanse here. And what this will do is kind of make it pop in and out a little bit to help that break up.
So are those colors put on metal panels?
Nope, those will be on EFS in there.
Well, there are some down at the ground level.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else, so that was it for the colors and other material?
You know, and I think it's also important to note that, you know, a traditional prototype for a true is a four-story wood structure, just to show you our level of commitment to our hotels and to the city. And so it makes you also feel comfortable what we could turn this into the future ever if we decided to. Our building is five-story plank and steel. I mean, block and plank, sorry. Block and plank with the perimeter walls out of steel, which allows it for much greater flexibility, which allows it to last a ton longer than wood structure would. Four-story wood structure, to me, I wouldn't build any wood structure four stories. At the most, I'd do a first-floor podium. Then three stories, there's too much shrinkage, cracking, a lot of problems in a four-story wood product. Not to mention, because we're on the highway and I want to be successful, we're very conscious of the fact that we will have highway, you know, I'm very conscious of the sound. So we will have highway glass to make sure that everybody in the guest room will not hear any car. Not to mention, we don't have PTACs that are traditionally on a true. We're going to spend an extra $1,000 per room on a VRF system, which is pretty much an energy-efficient HVA system, much superior to a PTAC or VTAC, which is the vertical unit of an air conditioning system. The VRF system has a payback period, I want to say six to seven years. Don't quote me on that. But it's just, it allows for no punctures on the exterior of the building, so we have zero sound transfer. So again, it's just another level equipment to our hotels. We want to make sure our guests are 100% satisfied, and we do not want to risk anybody hearing the highway. So it's just, we're a family-owned business. We do assets to keep them for generations, and this is why we build them the way we do.
Good. Thank you. Any questions for the architect on any other elements that were presented? Mr. Taylor?
I have a couple. I'm curious if you could explain to us, one of your primary views is the southbound I-75 traffic, which is your north elevation. But there are no color, no colors on that. Was it, was that a conscious design effort that you put no colors on that? Or is there an opportunity? You know, these, these vertical bands of color, they're very, you know, they're very eye-catching.
Sure. There's always opportunity.
Well, I just, I mean, I apologize if it was a conscious effort not to do that. I mean, when I look at the two elevations, the south and the north elevation. I mean, it's, I would say the south elevation has some excitement to it. But the north elevation, although it does have a combination of different materials, but there, it's more of a subtle or subdued palette of colors.
Yeah, no, no, I totally agree, yeah. What we did with this design really goes back to just, like I mentioned about Hilton and true. You know, they like their trues to look like true. This is the true design. Now, being able to go back and add some, you know, pops of color in there, you know, as a planning commission, if that's something that is really important to southbound traffic, I mean.
Yeah, for us, it's obviously getting Hilton's approval. It's a technically supposed to be a prototype. Every brick material he showed you was just its replacement of EFS, but we kept true to their colors. So with adding pops in the back and everything, I can't speak and he can't say we can do it 100% without getting the brand approval. I don't mind adding a little pop. But again, being a mid-scale level and being what Hilton is trying to achieve, they don't want us to overspend because they want us to be successful. And so we already are spending a little extra with the block and plank system, with the highway glass and the VRF HVAC. So, I mean, at a certain point, they're going to say to us, hey, this is no longer a true. And so I can't guarantee they would let us do that.
Well, it can't be for cost.
Well.
Because a brick wall is going to cost a lot more than an EFS wall.
Well, is the EFS panels that you're doing vertical going on top of what's up straight? I don't even know.
What is it on the south side? I assume it's, I assume it's some type of a sheeting on top of whatever backup you have, whether it's.
Yeah, so your block and plank, I mean, the way it was layout is your block, your bearing walls would go kind of 90 degrees to this. And then on these faces, it would just be a steel stud wall right next to your sheeting. You'd throw your rigid insulation on, which I'd like to be in your driving backup. And then over the top of that is where we'd put the brick or, or the EFS.
Honestly, I'm not suggesting it for anything other than a marketing asset.
No, I, I like your idea. I really, we'd have to ask Hilton on that.
Now, one thing I'll note that isn't very prominent, but will help, is you'll see down here, we have, what, they have a patio down here. And that color, that blue color, it doesn't really pop right here, but it would sit in this portion. And what it is, is it has slats, it's the same, this type of color here, and it's like an enclosed three-way patio. So it sits off the back of the pool. So there'll be a little pop of color back there. It's definitely not your bands, but.
But keep in mind, your, your I-75 is a bridge over, over Maple Road. So your traffic is not going to be looking so much down, or driver, let's say. It's going to be looking up at the, at the mass of the, and the height of the building.
Sure.
Another question, more of a technical question. How are you going to drain the roof of the canopy?
The roof?
No, no. Where the, the check-in canopy.
More than likely, what I'll do is we'll pitch back here, and then we'll downspout on top of this. And then this will drop between these wing walls. You can't see them in here, but then they'll go to storm.
Okay. You're not going to bring, you're not going to bring something down the columns of the canopy?
No, no. Especially in this climate. I mean, it'll freeze. You'll have ice everywhere. It's no fun.
Can you actually, on the north elevation, as you're going south on 75, can you see the name of the hotel?
We have one little sign right here. But again, that's down.
Yeah, they're not going to see that. If they could only, only see the, the upper stories.
Wouldn't say, is there any type of major signage requirement?
No, I'm not saying it's a requirement. I just think you would want it from a marketing standpoint.
Oh, I agree with you. Yeah, I just, some cities we get into have real tight signage, like signage is a big no-no. So if there's definitely room for that, that's something we can throw back at Hilton. Hilton usually doesn't argue about more signage.
At a minimum, I sure.
I'm all for more signage, too.
Signage is better for the owner, so.
I'm all for more signage.
I think it would be better, more effective on an upper story.
Well, if we could pull off maybe some more, you know, of your.
They'll add some more color, too.
Provide identity to a product other than just Hilton or true by just the colors of the building. I mean, I've seen nothing like this before. And that, you know, someone, you know, that would stick out as an element.
So piggyback on Mr. Taylor's comments. So, so what I'm hearing is these color bands are part of your identity. They're not technically signs. Even though people see the bands and identify them with true, they're not, they don't count as signage. So by putting, picking those bands and putting them on the other side of the building, the same bands, you're kind of, I don't want to say cheating because it's, but you're, you're being kind of sneaky because you're, you're, you're putting the identity on the building without accounting towards signage, if that makes sense.
Yeah. And you've got that opportunity in that little dead zone in the middle. Well, as I was looking, this is the pool right here.
No, no, dead zone going vertically.
Vertical, up and down.
15, 12.
Oh, right here. Kind of that stand out or pop now. I'm getting all excited here, I might get my markers on it.
Just again, going back to the sign, that, that true sign is the furthest west and low to the, low to the ground from I-75.
Correct. And with this patio and the pool, you probably. And we could very easily scoot that over. What they do in the prototype, the pool is optional. So typically, you would just have a back entrance here, and it would kind of be a little more prominent in the middle. But with the pool, we moved it off to the right-hand side, so.
Has Hilton used this palette of materials before on this product? Or has it always been EFS?
Typically, EFS. There's a lot of towns have just kind of an articulation requirement or a base body cab requirement. So we have used other, other materials before, but it's really stuck to the colors.
Well, my only question was, have they used the masonry products in conjunction?
Yes, yes, to answer that question, yes.
Mr. Sensi.
Yeah, you said a question for the civil engineer, Mr. Hunter. You noted that there's off-site detention for, for the stormwater. But I was just curious, will there be any water standing in the parking lot during the storm?
No. It's, it's, so that all water, there's no surface detention or anything.
A little hydrograin.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Yeah, Mr. Faison.
I just had two, done going back to my question about the saturation. The, the first is, you said it's targeted toward millennials? Is that?
All age groups, but yes, the design is targeted towards millennials.
And so I, I'm just trying to understand that traffic. Are they business?
They're business, yeah. Monday through Friday is majority business. And then, of course, we, weekend, weekdays are, weekends are our casual visitors.
And then the second question, just, and I don't know the answer to this, just about demand for hotel rooms in Troy. You know, what, what, what's the criteria you're using to say that, you know, there's demand for this? And then you mentioned also potentially having another project coming up soon. So I'm just trying to understand, the drivers for.
A lot of it's driven by office space. And you guys have an immense amount of office space, even with 20 million square feet and 20% vacant. That's a substantial amount compared to other markets in Michigan. And usually markets of this size, I don't want to be quoted here only because I'm public, but they usually have about 5,000 rooms, and you guys have 2,500. So I don't want to say that now every hoteler comes storming to Troy. I get first dibs. But, but, but that's basically our, you know, rule of thumb.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant this time? Yeah, Mr. Craig.
What's the building, the face of the building lit? Are you going to light? You've got those architectural features, the wedge. You've got those color elements, the vertical color elements. Are any of those going to be ground lit or?
Yes. If you go to the, the bands, the bands have floodlights below them that shine up on the building. And then we have, help me out. Is it the ballard lighting we have around the entrance? You don't remember? Okay, I can't remember. I can't remember exactly.
Do we have ballard lighting around that?
Yes. And then on the sides over the entrances, we'll have just, usually what they do is they put a little, you can see the canopies, but they'll be lit, they'll be blue like this. And they'll do like one can light over the side of those. And then the entrance will be pretty lit up. In terms of the true flag, I do believe that there's a ground also one that shines up on that one as well.
Is the true illuminated internally or not?
Yes. Yes, that one is. Yes, both of them are actually on the front.
You know, I apologize if they call for ballard lightings. We always do LED lightings.
Yeah, all of our lighting.
It should be, it should be LED.
Energy efficient.
There we go.
Mr. Taylor.
A question for staff. When we ask for photometrics, are we just concerned with parking lot lighting? Because on the site plan, I could only see, there were a number of lights. There were 25-foot pole lights, there were lights under the canopy, and there were a couple of building lights. And I didn't see any ballards. And that was one of the questions, thanks, Tom, for bringing that up, that I was going to ask about, you know, highlighting entry points or walkways with ballards.
No, that's part of the photometric plan now. Typically, typically ballards, because they're fairly low lying, they tend not to be as intense, so the, they tend not to significantly impact the photometric plan in terms of the foot candle intensity at the ground or foot candle spill over on a button property. But it is a requirement.
Well, and just in addition to their impact or lack of impact, I mean, I'd like to see what the fixture being proposed is. And there are no ballards shown on the fixture types. So again, if that's, if you're going to use ballards or if you're going to use ground mounted lighting to, you know, highlight the face of the building, which I think this is a great opportunity. Again, we just reinforce the presence of this building. You know, I'd like to know what that is. I appreciate your explanation, but it is not on the submittal.
Sure.
Question about going back to the, that yellow canopy there. Are those columns actually wrapped, the structural columns wrapped in the same plastic that is up above? Or are those steel or any other material that's actually painted yellow? What's the final?
It's either going to, it'll either be the Trespa. And this, just disclaimer a little bit, this is a new option that True just came out with, so I'm not totally, I don't have the details in my head. My guess would be is we'll have four tube-sealed columns, and they'll wrap them with some type of metal stud and either apply the Trespa panels, or we'll go with the ACM metal panels, which is listed on this submittal. So more than likely, we'll do Trespa below, and then we'll do like a Kyler or a Kynar with a metal that's like a really nice durable painted metal that we'll put up top. And just pour like a pair of bit around, because then we'll do the roof set down below, pitch all the water back.
Has there been any other product, any other location where that Trespa product has been used so close to the, to grade, at grade? And in terms of holding up to weather and the traffic there?
Weather, I'm concerned about traffic. Again, it's a new option, so we, I haven't put this on any others, so I can't answer your question directly. Now, if it's a concern, that's definitely something where we could take, you know, and build up a little, almost like a little planter box and start it off two feet off the floor, something like that. And all other hotels do that.
It is a durable product, the Trespa product is. I mean, if a car hits it, it's going to, whether it's metal or Trespa or brick.
All the way down to grade, meaning?
Yeah, I, there may be a requirement for a number of inches above grade that you can't take it right down to the grade. And I don't know that off the top of my head.
Ephesus is typically like six or eight inches, not that bad, so that's probably good.
Any other questions for the applicant this time? No, okay, thank you. Oh, you asked Ms. House?
We received an email that says there are four other hotels in one mile radius. So I just want, I'm just curious, is the hotel, is it tapping into a new market? Is it an overflow of demand from the hotels that are already on Maple Road or is it a bit of both?
It's a bit of both. Definitely going to tap into our current overflow that we have from our Hampton as well as is tapping into a new market. There's really no hotels that are specific towards the youth here, millennials specifically. And there's no hotel kind of geared to the edgy, modern look that this is providing for the area.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Edmonds.
One other quick question. How much smaller are these rooms? Because I stay in Hilton's all the time. I really, my wife and I really like the Hilton Garden Inn, as we always stay there.
They're about 75 square feet to 100 square feet smaller than a traditional hotel room. But don't let that fool you.
And they don't have desks.
They don't, well, they don't have desks you could work at. But they have credenza that's about 11 inches wide for you to place things on, charging stations, things like that. It's a very efficient design. I actually wish you can go on True's website right now and play the video. That way you can actually see the rooms. Although they're smaller rooms, they're built more efficient. You know, they, again, normal desk area you see if you go into a hotel room spans almost from the time you walk into the door all the way to the end. It's a desk almost like 30 inches deep. So it encroaches on a lot of space. So typical hotel room is 12, 6 wide by 26 deep. This hotel room is 11 wide. So you're losing about a foot and a half. So that's why the desk is now, or credenza is being shrunk down to a foot. So you really wouldn't think that it's really any smaller than a normal room, but it is. And therefore that's why it's more efficient, it's more dynamic, it has more technology. I mean, the rooms have 65-inch flat screens, you know. So, and if you want to work, they want to drive you down to the lobby where it's, you know, 2,500 square foot lobby space. Traditionally hotels like Hampton, we don't have a 2,500 square foot lobby space. We're not trying to drive you to stay in our lobby. This product is doing that for you. So that's where it also taps into a new element into the hotels in this market.
You have walk-in showers?
We do have walk-in showers. We have, only bathtubs we have are for ADA compliance.
Good, thank you. So this is a public hearing. I'll open it up for public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak. If not, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the table. Any additional discussion? Comments? Ms. Cruz.
Yeah, I have a few thoughts about what I've heard tonight in no particular order, but maybe points of discussion that we can talk about. You know, Ms. Howe brought up the comment and the email that we received that there's currently four hotels in a one-mile radius between 14 Mile and Maple Road. And we did briefly talk about saturation. As I think about that, Brent, tell me, is it the Red Roof Inn? Is that one on Stevenson Highway, right where like Rochester forks? Like from Stevenson, you got to go this way to go Rochester, there's a Red Roof Inn. As you continue down Stevenson, there's two hotels.
On the right and the Holiday Express on the left.
Yeah, yeah, so there's that. And so this would be on the corner of Stevenson and Maple. And then we also have obviously the Marriott that's on Big Beaver. We have the Drury that's on Big Beaver. We have the Somerset Inn that's on Big Beaver. And we have the Met that remains unoccupied. But they're at Crooks and 75 in an office park area that.
I think it's days as a hotel or.
Oh, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure you're done. So I'm just saying again, these, these are just my thoughts as we talk about saturation. And we've seen an Aloft hotel project come before us. And then we also saw the project that was to go behind Potbelly there at Crooks Road. And I'm not really sure, did we say that that is a dead?
Home Two, no, it's not dead.
And that, that is.
The petitioner is sitting in the audience right there with his hand in the air.
So that, that is, that is not dead. So, you know, I realize that we do have a significant amount of office space in the city of Troy. And I will tell you that personally, as a business traveler and friends of mine that work at companies who are also business travelers, you know, most of us have to go through this American Express travel portal thing. Our companies select certain hotels that are on the approved list in terms of what our companies will pay for on our expense reports. As a business traveler, you know, I want to stay at someplace that, that's pretty decent. I don't know that, that I personally am interested in going to a, a young vibrant hipster hotel. I stayed at the W one time in Chicago and the elevator light gave me a headache. So, you know, I, I can't say that I'm not without some hesitations on this project a, a, as a business traveler. I know that it's in a, that area is densely commercial and full of office buildings. But that doesn't necessarily say that all the people that are going to stay there are fresh out of college and they're all working at those companies right there on Stevenson and, and Maple. We've talked before about land at a premium here in the city and, and how we want the city to look. And the idea that the Hampton and the Garden Inn are luxury brand hotels, I mean, what does that make the Four Seasons? What does that make the park in Rochester? What does that make the Townsend if the Hampton and the Garden Inn are now luxury space? And then where does like a Motel 6 fit into, fit into that? I'm not so sure we need more lower-end budget hotels in this town as much as I think it would be really nice if we had an upscale five-story hotel in this town. So, those are, those are my thoughts.
Just, I'll be quoting from this book. It's called The Economics of Place, The Value of Building Communities Around People. And one of the things they talk about is millennials. We have 17%, 17.6% of our mission population, which is in that age bracket of 21 to 34, which 19.1 nationally. And I think that just seeing who I work with in the project that I'm on, when they come every three weeks, we have an influx of, of people. And now they've brought in Ernst &amp; Young. And again, there's a lot of millennials. And they report that they don't have rooms that they want to stay at. So I just hear a different story. Again, it's anecdotal, but I just, I see a different perspective on, on our hotel landscape as a whole.
Yeah, well, actually I support both those comments, but just to go to what Karen and Ms. Cruz said. I was looking or hoping for some more objective criteria around the demand for the hotel. Because no one's going to build a hotel, come before us with a project that they don't think will be successful. So how do we make that assessment, right? And so, so that's my level of discomfort around this. I think it's a great, I, I think it's an improvement, certainly on what's there. There's nothing there, but, but, but the area, right? But more broadly, how do we approve the next one and the next one? And how do we have a consistent approach? And so, so that's what concerns me about this.
So just a thought that I had on, on that. I think every hotel that has come before us in the last, these couple of years has this, we get this influx. This question always comes up. And, you know, maybe the general answer is every applicant or every developer that comes in before us with a, with a project like this, I think they have their proprietary metrics that they base their risk and their willingness to invest in our community. And that's proprietary to them and they're bringing that before us. And they're saying, we're willing to invest in your community and this is the product we're willing to bring. And we're always going to have that question. And I think we're, the answer that we got tonight and the answer that we will probably continue to get is more of a general response of your community still has that demand and we're trying to fill that demand. Yes, Mr. Cruz.
But it's a special use so that we have more rigor around how we review it. So that, that's the inconsistency I see there.
As you're, yeah, Mr. Edmonds.
Yeah, we, we don't choose where the developer decides to put his money.
Agreed.
And maybe they could just even share with us what, what is the actual investment value of this. Can you tell us how much?
100 million.
Yeah, thank you. That's a significant amount of money. And I, I kind of defer to the developer in saying, you know, if you think this is viable, and I think we need to give them the discretion. And perhaps they don't want to share, Mr. Fezon, all their specific competitive data that they, they do. And that's fair, in my opinion.
I say this, I, I don't want what I'm about to say to derail this because I think what's on the table this evening, we're, we're here to consider this application at this location. Ms. Cruz raised some very valid points and she raised some, suggested, mentioned some hotels that are potentially in the hopper. And I heard Mr. Cozen mentioned another one that, you know, in the hopper. And we're not reviewing or approving those that aren't, haven't been applied yet. So we're really, but I think the fear is, there's this one, but on the horizon, there's more, there's more dominoes, right? On the horizon. So Mark Miller, myself and Glenn Lapin, about a year ago, met with a consultant from the hotel industry. He's a hotelier, he's, he's very knowledgeable of the industry. And we talked about the, the significant influx we've had of hotels the last five or six years. So there's been quite a few, which I think is part of the reason some of us have heartburn about. Because we had so many hotel rooms approved in a short period of time. What I would like to do, and I, and I, I don't know if he can come to the next meeting, I mean, a month from now, or a meeting six months from now. So I don't want to, I don't want to derail this, this project. But for the sake of moving forward, independent of this project, I think I'm going to invite him to come speak to the planning commission. Talk about the change that occurred in the hotel industry, what led to the dramatic influx of rooms, what's led to the demand for more rooms. I mean, you heard Mr. Cozen indicate that, that there's 2,500 rooms in this area and we could support 5,000. That type of information, I think, could be brought to the table by, by the independent person who doesn't own or operate any hotels in the city. I think a half-hour presentation discussion with, with that person, I think would go a long way moving forward with the planning commission. I, I, I'm going to contact him and bring him in to a study meeting.
Ms. Cruz.
You're much more eloquent, but we'll get to that a little later. I have a great flavor in the market. If a developer comes in here and he's putting $10 million on a project on the table, he's got to believe, and I got to believe, that they've done a lot of research and know this hotel is going to be a success. I, I would like to hear the hoteler at some future meeting because we've got more in line. But I really believe that if a proprietor comes in here and wants to risk his capital on a hotel, it's got to succeed.
Yeah, Mr. Sanzega. Even to that point, I think the proprietor has to go to a bank. And the banker would have to be satisfied that he'll give his money back at a reasonable rate of return. And I, you know, I just recently went through a mortgage application and it's, it's just unbelievable, the information that they put you through, or it's justifying their requirements now for any type of mortgage. So I, in that regard, you know, I think the developer has to take the risk. The bank has to go along with him, Mr. Fezon well knows. And, and I, I do feel, if the developer's willing to take the risk in the, in the market group would withstand the, the man, I think it's, it's more than justified.
Ms. Cruz.
So Carlton, does Bank of America typically go after hotel projects from developers? Is that an, an area that your bank is willing to finance?
Yeah, I don't.
I'm not going to tell you at my bank, questionable.
You say, I don't want to comment on that specifically, but I would say I'm not aware of, of us financing any projects like this in this area.
So, so, you know, I'm not, I guess what I'm saying to Mr. Sanzega's point is, I'm not convinced that, you know, a lot of this money isn't coming from private equity, not banks. I think most of, there's more private equity money that is funding these projects in, in many respects than, than actual banks who've done due diligence and who look at the risk reward opportunities and say, oh, hey, yeah, sign me, sign me up for that. And let's assume, just for fun, because boy, I don't know that I would hate being 25 again. But let's just say I'm 25 and I'm fresh out of college and I'm in a job and I've, I've got to travel and stay at a hotel. Do I really care whether my hotel is hip and cool and colorful and doesn't have a bar or a desk in the room for me that has a 65-square-inch TV versus a hotel that has a desk, a smaller TV, but a happy hour? And I mean, do I really care? Because at the end of the day, am I not just really going there to have a place to sleep, have a cocktail, take a shower the next morning? And I, I want it to be close to wherever it is my office might be? I, I, I don't know. I don't know.
A lot of good input there.
I'm just saying, on that note, perhaps I should offer a resolution. Let's see where we all stand.
Good, go ahead.
Resolved, we have special use approval and the preliminary site plan approval for the proposed True Hotel, northeast corner of Maple and Research Drive, adjacent to I-75, parcel number 882026326025, section 26, burning zone GB, which is general business district. Be granted subject to the applicant adding a tree island between the double row of 12 spaces to the west of the building.
One second.
Second, my Mr. Crent. Mr. Tagle.
I would request consideration for a couple of additional conditions. One, that their color highlights be put on the north elevation of the building. And secondly, that the staff can review, but there must be a submittal for additional lighting, whether it's bollard glaze or brown lighting, that has been discussed by the petitioner, that they're planning for this project so that we can see really, they can see in totality what is the lighting scheme.
I've accepted amendment, my resolution.
One second.
So it was a commandment proposed by Mr. Tagle, resolution seconded by, by Mr. Crent. Again, okay, we'll leave it at that. Okay, any other amendments that we want to add? Or that was kind of the, the conversation that we had about adding the, the color palettes on the north face?
So I want to be clear about the conditions, Mr. Tagle. It's a, for consideration, because I guess.
No, the consideration was for the person that made the, the, read the resolution.
Well, no, I'm just saying, I just want to make sure we all understand page on the condition. Because I don't want, if True Hotel comes back and says, no, we're not going to allow the colors on the north elevation, are we making that a condition of approval? Or is it just the consideration to see what True says? I just want to make sure we're clear.
That is not, I was not presenting it as a consideration for True. I was presenting it as a consideration for the, an amendment to the resolution. So that is much, that's as much of a requirement as putting an island with a tree in it.
No, I agree. I just want to make sure the developer understands that, that True needs to agree to it in order to get this approval.
Right.
Okay.
And I understood that.
Thank you, as proposed.
I just want to make sure the developer understands.
So we got the motion.
No.
We can, we can just vote on the resolution with amendment as, as amended.
That's fine, thank you.
Roll call, Ms. Ernike, please.
Mr. Fezon.
No.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Crent.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Sanzega.
Yes.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Mr. Apoianian.
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
No.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Motion passes with the proposed amendment. Item number six on the agenda for tonight, zoning ordinance text amendment file number ZOTA 252, design standards. Mr. Harlan?
Speaking of design, it was very clear at our joint meeting as well as subsequent planning commission meetings that the planning commission was eager to have some additional design discussion and potentially design standards brought back for discussion. So that's where we are tonight. There's nothing new in this presentation that wasn't included in your memo. Brent and I are here more to listen to the thoughts of the planning commission and have a dialogue for discussion. If the planning commission feels comfortable with language or comfortable with some amended language, we would bring it back for a public hearing for a formal consideration by the planning commission. So again, the planning commission has expressed desire regarding this design issue. In 2007, we had a robust discussion in regards to what the planning commission wanted to see and that's what we're coming back with tonight. We have, I think, four recommendations in our, in our memo. I think three of them are fairly easy.
I think the fourth one lends a little discussion. The first one is to add architectural design questions or sample questions. They've been reviewed by the planning commission, I believe, before. We've discussed them. And for all practical purposes, Mr. Zaba and I actually require these to be, are already asking applicants to address these moving forward. So we will, we will add this as a actual requirement as part of the application process. So they will have to be submitted in writing with their application moving forward if the planning commission agrees to this.
The application will state that you have to be prepared to answer these questions at the planning commission meeting.
Oh, we won't receive them before?
We, probably a combination of both. They'll respond in writing and then make it as part of their presentation.
We will, we will make them submit before, so it's actually the packet.
I think that's approved.
Agreed.
Recommendation two is add requirement to the.
Recommendation two is add a requirement to the color renderings, the color rendering in 3D model be required as part of site plan supplemental. In practicality, we also are starting to require this now. We only do not require this for single-family, like cluster, site condominium-type projects. So multifamily, anything above that, commercial-wise, we already are requiring this movement over S. today.
So there would be a fly-around type of model.
You could do a 360 degree.
You could. You could. But it could be similar to what was presented with that 3D rendering we had tonight with the hotel, or just a perspective, 3D perspective.
Perspective, white shadows.
But did it show it in relation to the surrounding properties?
I did not.
Right? And that is always good, because I know that that's going to be the tallest, like, building on the corner of Maple and Stevenson. That five-story hotel will stand tall compared to everything else. And that doesn't always look good, in case you haven't noticed, driving out on Town Center Drive to Limerick.
Mr. Teale.
You know, I agree. I think context can be important. It may not be critical for every project, but I guess I would like to leave it up to you guys to tell the petitioner, this is an important site that you need to show your building in context with the surrounding, or it's not. You can show this kind of, you know, kind of a standalone, if that's appropriate. But I think context is important, because that's part of the whole, that's the whole reason we're talking about design. How do these new developments fit in or not with the surrounding?
Ms. Edmonds.
Picking back from Tagle's comments, how expensive is that? Is it that much more expensive to show the 3D rendering in relationship to the existing buildings around it? Is that a lot really more expensive?
I don't think it is based on, you know, what, I mean, we're not talking about, well, I should be careful what I say here. I don't think it is, Don. I think it can be done with technology today that would make it, and quite honestly, I think when we're looking at context of buildings, we're starting, we're looking at a much further-back look at the building. We're not necessarily looking at the details of the building that may be next door. We're looking at the mass of the building, or where is it on its property, and where is the new development going to be? You know, so we're starting to look at the bigger-picture item. So I don't think that is a big ask of a petitioner.
Well, I'd rather make it more affirmative, as Ms. Cruz has suggested, and leave it up to the planning department if they think it is not credible. If a developer doesn't, you know, have any pushback on doing that, I think we all, we deserve that.
Sure.
I mean, I'm fine with that, but that's the only change I think.
So would cluster developments actually require the 3D rendering now? So not those, just the...
Multifamily.
Multifamily.
As where we drew our line. I mean, if the planning commission feels that you want for clusters, we can discuss that, but we were thinking and visioning it would be multifamily, anything more intense than that, I should say.
Move on?
Yes. Requirement number three is add a requirement that all drawings for Princeville and shall be designed and sealed by a licensed architect. We require, now we require that plans be submitted by an architect or an engineer, but the building code actually requires that all plans submitted actually be required by a licensed architect. So this is consistent with the building code, and it would allow for more, the ability to address some of these earlier issues that we're talking about, as well as design standards we'll talk about in a second. So for that reason, we are recommending that it actually be signed and sealed by a licensed architect.
So simply by requiring that they formally address these design questions, they formally provide color renderings, 3D renderings, and they have to use a licensed architect for the drawings, in and of itself is going to step up the game for the developers, which is a good thing, but we're also going to add some more, some more standard, actual standards.
Mr. Harlan?
Yeah, Mr. Hudson.
You know, talking about licensing with the architect now and the engineers, in the effort with what is called Sustainable Development Design or...
Sustainable Development Review Committee.
Thank you. Whatever it is. Speaking of landscaping, for some of these bonuses that the committee can award, is there such a thing as a licensed landscaper or landscape architect? Oh, absolutely, I'm sure. Shouldn't we include that as part of the passage of agreements for licenses?
Particularly if we're looking at sustainable projects where they did it.
Yeah.
We do require that.
So what typically, what typically happens, our requirement today is that you've got this stack of plans, and it's got, the stack of plans has to be sealed by a professional surveyor.
For sites one acre above, we do require a landscape architect to seal them.
Thank you.
I knew it was apparent to know what the threshold size was, but required for an acre or greater.
So the criteria is just size of the development and not the type of development?
So for landscape, our landscape, the landscape plans that come in, they have to be signed and sealed by a landscape architect if it's an acre above, does not differentiate between type of development?
So if it's less than an acre, the entire packet can be sealed by a civil engineer, including this, that we cover the landscaping. For firms like, so, for firms like PEA, Dave Hunter from PEA was here, they have licensed landscape architects on staff, so they walk it down. It's versus a more, like a smaller, a smaller shop that doesn't have a landscape architect on the payroll.
Right. Ms. Cruz.
So if I understood that, then on any project greater than an acre of land, whether it's commercial or residential, it's going to require a licensed landscape architect?
To sign the landscape plan.
Okay, to sign the landscape. So does it matter, commercial or residential? What matters is the acre or less?
And that, the current ordinance says that.
Okay.
Yes.
Because I feel like we've had some projects come through here with some pretty underwhelming landscaping, and, you know, we're kind of looking for a way to change that.
Well, some, yeah, I mean, sometimes that's a function of a civil engineer deciding to get the tree stand about and become a, do the landscaping. In other instances, you have a client who says, go on the cheap. So every project's different.
Right, but there's not a way we can boost it.
No, there is. I'm just, I'm just saying that it's not always necessarily the fault of...
No.
Not the landscape architect or lack of a seal. Sometimes it's the client saying...
Got that.
Don't put one extra blade of grass on the site.
Right. We saw, we saw that project recently. We saw that project. Yeah. Square Lake and Limerick.
That wasn't an acre.
That wasn't even a quarter of an acre.
Okay, that's what I thought. What was the size?
Regardless, we're trying to avoid those landscaping situations that are clearly poorly thought through. And, you know, we could make all the difference in the world in terms of curb appeal. So I sort of feel like maybe there's some ways that we can, we can boost that. Plants are a good thing. I mean, there's no downside. There's no downside to really nice landscaping.
There is if it's not maintained.
Well, there's truth to that. There is truth to that.
Are you suggesting the one acre requirement should be limited or reduced?
I think that I am. I mean, when I think about some of the parcels of land that are left where we're going to get just a single building on there, and it'll probably be commercial in nature, it might, it might make sense.
Is that, is that going to include a half an acre, a third of an acre of a single-family residential development that has a landscape, so that, that's exempt?
They're not through the site plan.
Just site plan, preliminary site plan, and not directed to the building department?
Right. Because otherwise, we'll see a shoebox with one tree. So if we get a cluster plan or we get a site condo, they require a landscape plan.
This, I want to be very clear, kind of on Tom's point and Karen's point, just because the landscape architect seals, it doesn't mean it's good for getting additional trees and what are not required by the ordinance, so.
Right.
It means we get a higher level of professionalism preparing the plan.
Yes.
Which is a big step.
But for at least reviewing the plan before it's stamped.
Right. Exactly.
It can be prepared by a civil.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to the last.
If we could just eliminate "by right." Here, go for it. Rewrite this.
We'll just, we'll change zoning ordinance to PUD ordinance. Everything's negotiated.
So the one thing we heard from the planning commission during Cruz was...
We're going to talk garbage?
Well, we don't talk garbage specifically, was more objective standards when reviewing site plans, specifically with regards to architecture requirements. When you write ordinance requirements, you often have to have an intent statement. So we have given you some standards to look at and review. These are not guidelines, these are standards. These will go in the ordinance, and we will review them as part of a site plan, and you will respond to them as a planning commission accordingly. But to do that, you need an intent statement. So this front part, this sentence is just to basically justify why we're putting these in here. Intend to enhance crucial characteristics of Detroit's commercial areas and residential neighborhoods by billions upon patterns of development that can create, create and enhance a sense of place and help a well-defined environment design context. And we can, we can, you can work, we can work with these as much as you'd like moving forward. So in the next, I get into standards, and I've kind of grouped them kind of in three buckets. The first, there's A, B, and C. The first bucket is talking about compatibility of the development as well as a transition, appropriate transition between various land use. The second bucket, which is B, talks about the use of quality architectural practices and kind of explains what that means. And the third talks about more of the environment as well as connectivity and safety for both vehicular and pedestrian travel. So the first bucket, again, starts talking about compatibility and transition. So there's three standards. The first, the overall, overall ready standards of all shall ensure compatibility to existing commercial districts and provide a transition between land use. And how do we measure that? One, two, and three. One, design buildings that reinforce the urban character. Two, allow for street fronts with a variety of architectural expression to avoid a monotony. And three, achieve a compatible transition between areas of different height, massing scale.
Yes, Ms. Cruz.
I kind of want to eliminate urban. I want to, I kind of want it to say, design buildings that reinforce the character and not necessarily use the word urban to describe the character.
I thought the same thing, but then I was wondering if urban's there because it's commercial districts.
True, true, but commercial doesn't necessarily mean urban the way that I'm thinking of it, and so it becomes a word that's subject to definition, right? We can argue about what urban means, and I think that if you just take it out and you say it reinforces the character of the surrounding area, you've got less to argue about.
Except if there's cinder block buildings all around it. Ugh.
But even if you put urban character around cinder block buildings, I'm going to argue that cinder block is a warehouse district, and it's absolutely urban.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, if you eliminated the word urban and just say reinforce the character of the surrounding area, you may have a really poor area.
Can we add enhance? Reinforce and enhance? That could work.
Enhance.
Or enhance the character of the surrounding area.
I encourage you on a point. I mean, we've got a, let's say, a real crummy part of the city, and if we say we've got to design our buildings to reinforce the character of that surrounding area, I mean, we're kind of shooting ourselves in the feet. I understand what we're trying to do, get a higher standard, but maybe we need some more wiggle words in there to achieve what we want to do.
Enhance was a good start.
Yeah. It's tuning out, isn't it?
I like enhance.
We can add...
We could say enhance and elevate.
Enhance, upgrade.
Enhance and improve.
Improve, elevate.
Enhance implies improve, though.
Great.
Sure. One word is nice and plain.
Well, we should also say give some relief and devise. It's the same freaking thing.
So design buildings that enhance, just the character of the surrounding area?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Here comes on bucket A.
I'd like something other than allow for street fronts to go in line with the enhance, maybe promote, street fronts with a variety of...
You know, I'm sorry.
Encourage.
I was just thinking that when we allow for street fronts, most every plan we get in here, we've got rectangles for streets, with sharp corners. Maybe we can kind of encourage curves or some variety of the street form.
If you're talking about the spoke in downtown Detroit, it confuses me every time.
No, I'm thinking on highways, you know, they don't like five or 10 miles of straight highway. Like some contours in there to kind of keep your attention and relieve the monotony. Yeah, maybe that's too much for a new sub coming in, but I would think their little ingenuity can do something like that.
Could be traffic calming.
We're talking about the buildings, are we?
Yeah. The roads are pretty much in place. Well, we've got some new developments, and we're going to put roads in, and maybe it's too late to try and solve that problem.
It's so little.
Well, John Tagle always says, use some creative.
Oh, sure. But I'm saying, look at the roads we have, and we're talking about redevelopment for the most part.
Just one thought I have is on item number three there, achieve a compatible transition. I think we've had a challenge in the past of actually defining what that word really meant, compatible, with certain projects. So I'm trying to see, I'm trying to think of what, what might be a more fitting word there that wasn't as generic, because that word compatible can be subjective, and we've had that, I guess.
Don't we have that language in a special use, one of those conditions of a special use?
Don't you feel the definition, or the further definition of height, massing, and scale refers back to the compatibility aspect? I mean, we're saying that these are the measures we're going to look at for compatibility of the adjacent...
The ordinance uses the term compatible and incompatible when describing issues such as this, so it's a consistent term that's used throughout the ordinance. So that's the reason why we continue that term in this as well.
Are we done with number two? Did we say, how are we going to...
No, we're not.
What did we, did we replace allow for street fronts with something else? Did we...
There was something thrown out.
Promote?
Promote.
Encourage?
Promote or encourage street fronts with a variety of architectural expression?
And allows for flow?
You know, we had that already in the ordinance somewhere else, don't we? We talked about condominiums and the three or four different street fronts that we want if they're adjacent to one another.
Elevation, ABC.
Yeah, the elevation, yes.
The ABC.
We do, but we don't, we talk about that in terms of breaking it up, but we don't talk about different sort of the elimination of monotony. So it's a little bit different context.
Well, I don't think they're pretty much the same thing.
But you're thinking of what's for housing.
Yes.
We don't have that for commercial.
Is this for, oh, this is for commercial. I'm sorry. You're right.
So Ben, are you replacing allow with some other word, and I didn't catch it?
This is your language.
Yeah.
I'm hearing promote, is what I heard.
I like promote, so.
Or encourage, as opposed to just allow. I'd like to encourage that more, promote, street fronts.
Could use both, promote and encourage.
Promote's fine.
And yeah, promote.
Encourage is like, okay, you can do it, but we don't have any to enforce it.
Promote is sort of like, let's see some promotion here, folks, as opposed to encouraging someone to do something. Encouraging is like...
We could say acquire.
Require would be...
Really.
Requires...
Street fronts with a variety of architectural expressions.
Yeah, that would be tough, that would be, yeah. That'd be tougher than promote.
Yes.
It's got to get done.
You'd have to show money, don't you?
Do you want to go for require?
Could you buy it and call it require?
Yeah.
Is it too stiff?
Nah, we want a great city. Okay, go with... Nah, we, we want a great city, okay, go with.
Maybe what, maybe what we could do is say require in that front and instead of saying the negative, prevent monotony, to promote diversity. So, instead of, I don't know if that fits better than.
I would like to require and prevent monotony.
You want to prevent monotony. You want to prevent a negative?
I, I, yes.
You do, okay.
Yeah, because there's too much monotony. So, require instead of promote?
Yeah.
Require street fronts with a variety of architectural expression that is appropriate and its context and prevents monotony. I'm, I'm.
I'm good with that.
It's like poetry.
And then three?
I can almost hear you, Mr. Satter.
Like Shakespeare.
Are these three going to be requirements under A? Yeah.
Two is a requirement now, isn't it? I mean, that's.
I'll clarify that.
We're requiring two.
But so maybe, yeah, but the, and then A, instead of ensure, we should, maybe we should say require there.
So, so the trick is to come up with standards that are definable, measurable, applicable, enforceable.
Defensible.
Defensible.
Yeah, require, like, you know, word there.
Yeah, require a compatible transition. Instead of achieve, well, I mean, it's in a way, they have to achieve it, it's requires to achieve it, so.
We've been working closely with the city attorney's office on this language and we will continue to, so when we come up with the final draft, we're going to make sure that it passes muster.
Yeah.
It's good.
So, on three, how do we deal with, like, if one project comes before another, that it looks incompatible because the project came in first and it doesn't show the transition, but we're expecting, how do you, how do you work that?
You can rely back on the master plan and what the master plan calls for in terms of transition and compatibility.
You can, you can ask the applicant to focus on the compatibility and provide more information if it's unclear. Maybe it's, there's a different, there's different elements that let, that add to the discussion of compatibility, height, noise, I mean, there's all kinds of different, different elements and we, you can ask the applicant to specifically address all those elements.
Isn't that exactly what got us into the problem on McClure Street?
That's why you raised it.
That's the element, so, I'd sure like to, you know, that whole argument was that, you know, does A follow B or does C follow A? I think we need to try to clarify that.
Yeah.
Well, I would, I'm going to get away from that specific example.
Thank you.
And just talk in general always. One way that I describe zoning is it's a balance of property rights, right? So, you have Kenny Cozen, who is the applicant, he comes in with prop, with a bundle of property rights, the surrounding properties have a bundle of property rights and you try to come up with that balance. I think this is what we're trying to achieve here is, is a balance of property rights and ensure that the developer is entitled to rights of developing the property under the zoning ordinance, but the neighbors also have rights not to be negatively impacted. Compatibility is how we achieve that balance. So, ultimately, there, when you have, when you have uses that are not the same, there's got to be a point where they meet and there's, there's a point of friction. It just, it's inevitable. So, under our zoning ordinance, it's the planning commission's authority for site plan review by right and special use to determine the compatibility.
Can you add use to them?
Well, use is already defined, these are design standards to specifically address design, the uses are, it's already been determined that the uses permit.
Can we add, I don't know if we can add a requirement, but can we add a recommendation to the part where we're asking for a 3D rendering, for the applicant to show a 3D rendering of properties that are actually within the bound, that, that are within the limits of that development or outside of limits, that show permitted use of the master plan and not necessarily what's there existing today? So, we can understand the compatibility of what is being proposed with what is actually permitted. Can we, can we, going, you know, forward, can we ask for that, just to get a better visual, not just of that project, but how that fits in with, with the master plan allows and not what's there existing?
I would say that my, my take, and you two feel free to jump in, I think that is, is appropriate information and important information if we're talking about something like a conditional rezoning, where they're asking for a legislative action by, by city council and, and as part of that dialogue, we want to know what could go there if we zone. You know, it could be, we're proposing this, but it could be that. Something, something by right, I think, is a different discussion, because it's, if it's by right, we've already made a determination that on every property zoned a certain way, this is an appropriate use, period. So, to say that, well, it could be this, but it's already been established that that use is permitted by right. They have the right based, based on that zoning to. I, I think, I think what you're, what you're asking is appropriate in some instances, but I don't think it's appropriate in all instances.
Not necessarily during a site plan review.
Not necessarily during site plan review is what I'm saying. If it's a conditional rezoning, absolutely.
Can I work on number three a little bit? Somehow I just, yes, it's not about McClure, it's just generally about, I don't think it achieves everything that I.
Do you want us to folk, to try to come up with stronger language, whether it's compatibility and defining that and coming out, okay.
Yeah, maybe just, instead of just height, massing, and scale, you've got architectural features. You know, that, that's, it is the architectural design of, let's say, creating a steel warehouse next to, let's say, a Tudor house is not compatible, but it might be height, massing, and scale, but visually it's not.
Maybe they want diversity, Tom.
Let me ask you the question. Walsh College's new addition, do you know what's on, on the north and south side of that? Now, would you say that is compatible with the house on the north or the huge dome church on the south?
No.
No? However, would you say that that really, I'll use the term architectural gem, or a very nice architectural statement?
It is.
Yeah, it is.
I want to be careful that we don't put ourselves in such a box that we talked about earlier about being compatible with what's surrounding. We, you know, I mean, we're trying to achieve an architectural excellence or an improvement. And if, if, you know, if what we, what, if what we're nestling this project within is not something we want to strive for, or it's less than what we want to strive for, I just want to be careful that we don't box ourselves in.
I can understand that.
I don't hate achieve. I don't hate, I don't hate that word. I, I, I think it's got enough wiggle room that it's defensible. I think it's got enough wiggle room that it gives us discretion. And I certainly think that it explains what it is we're trying to do. I don't know what else you can ask for from a single word.
Would, would that add any value, number three, to be more specific and incorporate any kind of language that specifically addresses the master plan there? Like to say, according to the master plan, would that, would that add any value to that? And not just leave it that general meaning? You know, we've had that challenge that it hasn't been referenced in the past, so it's kind of been lost in the, in the mass of, the sea of ideas and thoughts. And, and then in the end, we kind of had to come back to the master plan and say, oh, by the way, this is kind of what we're, we're trying to use as a guide.
My, my take on that is, is the, this 350-page document is based on the master plan. And, and I'd rather take the elements from the master plan and codify them here versus have to, it references and I've got to go back to the master plan and I've got to go through it and find it. I'd rather take those elements that apply to this situation and put them in here so that they're in one spot. So, I borrow from the master plan for those standards.
Yeah, what are the difficulties, Ali, is master plan, again, is a, I don't know, order page document, is, because there's a master plan at what, you know, we're, what's a part of the master plan? So, I, I don't want to box, again, I don't want to box us in too much. And I want to, I mean, attorney de France is right, I mean, we wrote this as a, a serious balancing act between trying to allow some discretion for the planning commission, but also being defensible that we're not going to get, you know, issue legal challenges. And that's still haven't been fully vetted by the attorney's office and this language is, is now. So, it is, it is, it is a tight, it's a tight one. And also, you know, I think the community has always represented, you know, upheld property rights and development rights, too. We don't want to stifle, stifle that, too. So, it's a balancing act.
We can, we can look at this and come back, I mean, there's.
Yeah, we don't have to approve this language tonight, move forward.
Just throwing out another idea, what about creativity in number three? Is that something that's defensible? Can you add something about creativity in those transitions? Not just compatible, I want them to be a little bit harder.
I think John Tagle had a great illustration that described the problem with the Royal House, the college, and the church. Completely different. You know, that's what we're going to be up against. And if you try and fit that in there, you don't know how to pick this thing through.
I don't know if creating a compatible transition. Creativity, like the word. I don't know that that requires creativity. Creativity, to me, belongs somewhere else, but it doesn't, it doesn't belong in that area that's talking about height, massing, and scale and very large projects next to buildings that are already existing that might be significantly smaller. I don't think creativity plays into that. I think creativity plays into design, it plays into your architectural expression, creativity plays into, you know, your urban character, but I don't think it goes with height, massing, and scale.
Maybe creative goes in the very, number one, design creative.
Right, I, you can put it in there somewhere, I just don't see it in.
Maybe right up front.
So, one, one way I would look at it is take number three and apply it as a test to Walsh College, if that would come before us right now, right? Like Mr. Tagle said. And we, we, let's say we have that before us right now, on the north, we have a historic home, on the south, we have a dome church that was built in the eighties. And we'd say, okay, let's apply this test, is it compatible? And we'd say, I think, I think it just failed, right? So.
I think it did.
Yeah, so it's not compatible.
I don't think it failed to the south.
It, it's, it's very modern compared to the historic home and it's, it's.
But it doesn't say compatible architecturally, it says height, massing, and scale.
And it doesn't seem to mean that.
So, even, even at the, it doesn't mean that.
Well, the massing are obviously very different in that way. Look at the church and the college and get this home. I mean, again, talk about massing, you have different masses in there.
But it's also on a major highway, it's not on a residential street.
Lurinoy is a major highway?
Well, it's a major street, it's a major artery.
I don't know that I call it a highway.
Well, it's a major artery.
Artery.
It's defined as a major artery.
Because these, these buckets, as Ben Zarelko calls them, are related to each other? Again, we put a question mark on this one?
Sure.
And we, we continue to, to, to go through these and maybe come back and see, because maybe, maybe we answer it a different way once we go through these.
Okay, yeah.
That's a good idea.
Bucket two talks more about architectural practices. Mr. Tagle had a change to what term he.
Yeah, so this would read that development shall incorporate recognized best architectural building design practices.
So, this one tried to be a little, a little more specific and less, less, I don't know the right term for the first one, but, so the first one is encourage high-quality design construction and detailing to foster a lasting impact on the community. Two, design buildings with high-quality durable materials. And so, we wanted some, some details of, of some examples of what to use, such as an outlet to stone, brick, glass, and metal. Ephes or material equivalent shall only be used as an accent material. Building develops with pleasing and balanced compositions and forms. Design roofs that are appropriate to the architectural style of the building and create an appropriate visual exterior mass. Commercial buildings incorporate clearly defined, highly accessible customer entrances, so, using such design features as canopies, porticos, et cetera. And lastly, community amenities that add value to development, such as patio seating, public art, clock towers.
Yeah, I think looking at that, that hotel tonight, I think it passed the first five, but it was lacking the number six.
I said no.
Just a question on three, the, the others seem fairly specific, but when we say pleasing and balanced compositions and forms, it just seems very broad. Yeah, vague, and the others are broad, but they're more specific, so.
Maybe it might be in the eye, it'll be the whole.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I think we, I think a different word for pleasing is, is a good suggestion.
And what I find to be about, somebody else might know.
Well, remember that the planning commission makes decisions by resolution and what you think's balanced, maybe you don't think is balanced. And that's the architect's job to explain why he or she believes it's balanced, so.
The burden is out there.
It's going to be, it's going to be impossible to come up with a design that makes all nine of you do cartwheels. But if you get five of you to do cartwheels, then they're in pretty good shape.
I don't joke.
In addition, balance, you know, there are some asymmetric designs that are just done.
Yeah, so when we come up with three, we'll come up, we'll come up with some language that's, that's better than, for three.
Maybe they can throw in the creativity.
Ivan, we'll find a way.
So, just going, just a thought on number two, you know, we had the applicant tonight bring up the fact that Ephes has come a long way. So, you know, Ephes is one of these products that, again, it's a building material that has changed and improved significantly in the last 30, 40 years. And we can have an applicant then come before us and argue that it can fall into the category of a higher quality material, not equivalent to brick, but not necessarily a low-quality material. How do we handle that situation if they actually come before us and present a specification that shows the quality of the entire profile and the entire cross-section of detail that indicates, you know, this is, this has come a long way, what we're actually trying to put on a building, like we had tonight?
Yeah, durability is really important, that if they, if they can reach the standards of other building materials, you know, really, stucco has been across our country and across the world for centuries.
Centuries? I think so. How long has stone and brick and glass and metal been around?
That's what I'm saying.
These are proven, I, I mean, they're more durable than Ephes. I'm not saying.
I'm talking Ephes, I'm talking stucco, that's, you know, your churches in the 1600s and stuff in Mexico and.
But Tom, stucco is just a surfacing material on a substrate of stone or masonry.
But that's what the.
That's not what Ephes is.
No, no, I understand, but what I'm saying, it's a, it's a stucco, visually it looks like stucco, it's just that there's foam underneath instead of some other heavier sort of material like brick or block or some other compacted dirt. But the point is.
What would happen if we said we did not, we would, we, we do not accept Ephes, period? Are we going to?
Is that defensible?
There are, I look, there are ordinances out there that say no Ephes. I actually changed this language, it was different, and I actually, my suggestion was, well, no, it was, I actually said should only be used as an accent material. I mean, it was, I forget what the language was before, it was.
It seems, it seems to come up so much.
But if you want no Ephes, but I just think, I just, to, to not require or to not allow Ephes anywhere seems.
If I, if this was language was passed like it was and I was reviewing tonight's hotel in front of us, I would say their use of Ephes was used as an accent material.
Sure.
Yet tonight, did the planning commission, outside those two that voted against it, feel that that was an appropriate use of that material? Sounded like we, most, most planning commission did.
I didn't vote no because it had Ephes on it.
Neither did I, yeah.
But, but I don't think that, I mean, personally, I'm not looking to encourage buildings that are made primarily of Ephes.
And this is written, so it wouldn't allow.
That's right, I'm just saying, I, I, I'm not looking to necessarily change that and put Ephes up there with high-quality durable materials, period.
Well, it isn't, it's use it at.
Right, but I'm just saying.
Or an accent material.
Ollie said, what if a builder came in here and argued and said Ephes was high-quality?
Or what if the building?
I, 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 I'm just saying that, that's fine, make that argument, but our ordinance says differently. That's my answer.
Why don't we just delete the last sentence? That means Ephes as a question will be cited. That means EFS as a question will be cited with the other elements in there.
But I think that makes it harder to defend if a developer is going to come in here and say it is high-quality. If we're making the determination, no, EFS is not high-quality. It doesn't meet our definition of high-quality.
Well, and as the architect said, over the last three or four years, it's been substantially improved, so.
What's been substantially improved about the product is not the product itself.
I'm sorry, can I...
What's been substantially improved about the product is not the product. It's how the product's been installed. Before what EFS... They didn't consider what happens if water gets behind the EFS. And where EFS became very popular was in condominiums. Condominium development sued developers. And that's when the industry looked at itself and said, hey, we need to do a better job. So if you remember, he used the term rainscreen. It's not a rainscreen, but what they have is what they call a drainage plane now behind EFS so that if your substrate is here, you have a drainage plane, an airspace, and then the EFS. So then if water gets back there, it's allowed to either to drip out or to ventilate so it doesn't create mold or it doesn't create...
Does that take away all the arguments that EFS was a material we didn't like? They had them moved to that point?
EFS started out as a very... I won't use the word cheap, but cost-effective material. That's why it was so popular in the beginning. It's still a very cost-effective material, and that's why you still see it on a lot of developments. Personally, I like the way this is written. I don't want to throw EFS out in total because I think if it's done properly, it's not going to deteriorate or degrade over time. But again, if we're looking for a substantial development of quality materials, I don't put EFS in that category. But as an accent material or a component in a smaller way, I don't see a problem, personally.
If can be sweet.
Yeah, I agree with you.
What determines that? How much of the building could be accent? If a builder came in here and said, you know, we want 50% of our building to be accent. That, to me, is not an accent. I mean, that, I don't... I mean, tonight... Do we need to define, know what accent is?
Percentage-wise?
I think we're going down a path. I think... I respect your opinion. I mean, did anyone around the table feel that tonight's presentation of EFS or the amount of EFS was not an accent?
No.
Yeah.
Okay. I think with this language, and I think with staff coaching and helping developers in the initial conversations, you know, they should get the idea of an accent versus a majority or a competitive material with other materials.
To give you an idea of how much coaching we do. We do not formally require a color rendering or 3D color. We get them on most applications, right? For the last few years. That's us coaching. It's not required.
It will be required.
You know, do we sometimes forget to ask them questions? Sure. We're not perfect, but the provisions that we've already talked about earlier tonight, we're going to get those in every instance. And I think there still needs to be... We're not going to be able to put together language that's so prescriptive that defines what percentage is... What's the word?
Accent.
Accent, thank you. And it's impossible. So that's why we ask... We have the architect. We require an architect that he or she answers the questions, and we have dialogue, et cetera, et cetera, so.
And I can go first. The direction that I think that we received from the planning commission, you don't want us to go down that road. You don't want to have to be limited to some superscripture. That's why it was written like this. Should I move on to bucket C?
Sure.
Okay. Bucket C. We're talking about more of the pedestrian realm and particular travel. Provide elements that would define the street pedestrian realm. Create a connection between public driveway and ground floor activities. Create a safe environment by employing design features to reduce vehicular or pedestrian conflict while not sacrificing design excellence. Enhance the pedestrian realm by framing the sidewalk area with trees, awnings, and other features. And include site design measures to improve safety for pedestrians.
Creativity could easily fit in here, especially number four. And other creative features or something like that. Thank you, Claire. We did say...
Our goals are creative in every bucket. I don't care where, how, whatever, in every bucket.
But maybe it is innovative in some places.
Okay.
A happy sentence is a creative sentence.
Innovative would be good, too. So you don't repeat the word too often.
You're getting greedy now. Innovation...
Innovatively creative. Creatively innovative.
You know, there's nothing more under the sun than that.
Would you like visionary, just for good...
Buckets?
That's the third bucket. So if anyone else has anything on C? Okay. What I heard was that we need some more cleanup of bucket A. And specifically, number three, which is the achieved compatible transition between areas of different height. Bucket B, cleanup, number three, which is develop buildings with pleasing and balanced compositions and form. And C, it sounds like we're okay with the language, but we need to insert creative in all the buckets. So with that, Director Savadon and I will clean this language up, and then we'll take one more round to the attorney's office for review and then bring it back for one more look before we schedule a future public hearing on this.
I also have to move to the last three plans that have EFS in bucket A.
I've already written... I'm just talking about reading. Yes, we got to read that then.
Thank you for this.
Okay.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So can we move on to zoning ordinance text menu?
Yep.
Item number seven. Moving on to item number seven on the agenda, zoning ordinance text menu file number ZOTA 253. Building height in GB general business zoning district. Mr. Carlin. Yes, thank you. So the other item up for discussion tonight is in regards to the height allowed in GB. When the master plan and the zoning ordinance was written, there was an intent to incentivize or encourage more, I would say, more dense development, specifically on Rochester Road. That was done in a different context, a different time, especially in regards to the economy. We've had one project that has been built to the maximum height limit, and there was obviously a lot of concern, neighborhood concern as well as citywide concern in regard to that development. So with that being said, we went back and took a look at the regulations and brought back new language. The maximum height currently... The maximum height currently allowed in GB, which is most of Rochester Road, a few other pockets throughout the city, is five stories or 75 feet. Realizing that many of these GB backs up to single-family residential, and there's that kind of area transition that we've been talking about a lot. We felt that probably was not appropriate. So what we are recommending is we drop the five stories, 75 feet, to three stories, 40 feet. It will create two buildings right now of non-conformity. It will create the self-storage that was approved on Rochester as well as the Macy's building, actually, in Oakland Mall, is over 40 feet in height. So those two buildings would now become non-conformities. They would be allowed to remain in perpetuity. However, they would become non-conformitaries. I don't have anything... Thank you, Mr. Carlin. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Savadon.
Just one question. You mentioned there's some other pockets of GB, and I wonder if they had the similar shallow lot sizes.
Most do. So the GB is this fairly strange-looking hatched parcel. There's Rochester Road, and then there's some pockets down in here, which these are larger parcels. And then there's a couple pockets up here on Big Beaver. For the most part, though, it's mostly along Rochester as well as the southern corner of the city.
But are those issues the same in those other areas?
No. Those are larger parcels. Where this really applies is Rochester Road. We have the most shallow parcels that back up directly the single-family.
So then where I'm going is, does it need to apply to those other parcels as well? Or should it just apply to Rochester Road and then encourage maybe different development in those other parcels where the size of the lot is not an issue?
Well, maybe what I would say, though, is that we haven't had any development in those larger parcels that's asked for a larger height than what we currently allow to 75 feet. So I would think that we would handle that if a case came in where we actually had development at one larger. There are other avenues to get larger height through a different zoning process that would probably be more appropriate for those.
Yeah, PUD, right?
PUD, conditional rezones, something of that nature.
Maybe I'm not saying it correctly. I'm not saying make those larger. I'm saying, do you need to change those the same way you're changing the Rochester Road height requirement?
Are you saying... Sorry, are you asking me to rezone those properties?
No. What I'm saying is currently it's five stories and 75 feet in GB, you're saying, right? The... There's an issue on Rochester Road, so we want to make the height less.
Yes.
Do you also...
True.
Yeah, three stories. Is there a need to do that in those other districts as well? Or can you leave it at five stories and 75 feet?
When you change the zoning for a category, you change it for the entire zoning designation.
Anything that's categorized as a GB is going to be...
So what we would have to do to do that? It could be done. What you'd have to do essentially is section off those sections of parcels on Rochester Road, create a separate zoning designation for those, change the height of those and keep it. It's probably easier to do it, all the parcels in GB, because again, even the parcels that are allowed for now haven't asked for that. The only parcel that's asked for is on Rochester Road, where we have the biggest conflict. So I would suggest at this point, we keep it as the whole, all the GB be changed to three stories, 40 feet.
Okay.
So that the parcel right there, Big Beaver and 75 northbound exit ramp, that is not zoned GB, that is zoned Big Beaver district. Is that correct? Big Beaver? That is...
It's a parcel.
Correct, right there. Yeah, that's Big Beaver. So that's not at all going to be limited in height of what's being proposed?
It will be allowed as a lot on the Big Beaver district.
Okay. So that height will be allowed even though it's kind of like that entry point to the Rochester Road border and we hit the GB district immediately north of Big Beaver? Okay. Any other thoughts, comments, or can we move on to item number eight?
Yep. Final thing.
Okay. Master Citizen Planner capstone presentation.
We are ready for all evening.
Let's start with this.
Fine.
Fine. See how fast I can get it up.
Do we get cake with this?
Okay, I can handle it. I'm non-violent, sorry. Thank you.
Would you like to stand up here or by the mic? Or however, do you want to do that?
Fine, from here, I'm good. Thank you for correcting March. It's on my jump drive in case you didn't have time. I was in Alpharetta... Just a small aside, I was in Alpharetta this weekend for our wedding, and the city is just a suburb of Atlanta. And 23% of its citizens are foreign-born compared to Troy, which is 27%. And I'll tell you, we booked the hotel rooms for the wedding in January. We didn't... The hotels were... We had to go through hoops to get the rooms because it was so booked. And they also have so many hotels. I don't know what it is, but I just... I felt like I was in Troy, except for the fact that the roads were wider. Because everywhere... People were staying at different hotels, and we had all these logistic issues. But it was so interesting to see that... Well, not the only ones. And I saw housing like we're trying to do and just... It was very similar, and it was just really interesting to see.
Well, except it's spring in Alpharetta.
It was 37 degrees. I'm sorry. Global warming seems to be affecting everyone, but anyway. So I just wanted to share that with you that if you can have to look around at what's going on in other parts of the country. So this is about planning and placemaking. And so Brent had to correct my February to March because my printed copy, that's not what it says. But thank you because I wanted to do this last month, but...
Kathy. Kathy, correct it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brent, we all know Kathy's the brains behind this.
We all know that. No one in this room is smarter than I am, okay? That's why she's here today.
So that's fast. So that's moving forward. That's on Brent. The laser can do it.
Okay. So just to give some background, because it's not just us, but also for a refresher for some of you who haven't done your Master Citizen Planner certification. So I needed to do this if I wanted to be a certified citizen planner, and I wanted to. After we went through all... We went through in 2017 with our concept plan for the Civic Center and just as I started understanding how municipalities are funded and how all of that is broken, I just thought this would be a good set of skills to have to do my job, not only as a planning commissioner, but also as an EBA member in a better way. So I took the opportunity, went to those seven units at the Michigan Association of Planning Annual Conference in September. And these were the seven units. You can read them. How many of you have taken them? You know what I'm talking about.
How many have taken this course? That's pretty good. You're on the clock.
And how many are certified? Okay. So I'll be the third one. So this is followed by an online exam and then doing this capstone presentation. I had great dreams of doing this capstone presentation to a larger audience, but hopefully enough people will watch me and offer me feedback. And the idea of the capstone presentation is to showcase a topic from the course. So first, I want to just go back and explain what is planning. The American Association of Planning, American Planning Association, APA, says the goal of planning is to maximize the health, safety, and economic well-being for all residents. I love, Ms. Cruz always says, does this satisfy the health, safety, and welfare for our community? And so that's the definition. I'm not going to read what's in front of you. This is nationally. At the local or the state level, the Michigan Association of Planning MAP, it exists so that Michigan will consist of healthy, safe, attractive, and successful communities built on quality community planning. So we want to have a vision for the community today so that we know who and what we want to be tomorrow. And I know that sounds cheesy, but we are the city of tomorrow today. So what's a master plan? That's what is a general statement of the city's goals and policies. It provides a single comprehensive view of the community's desire for the future. We adopted our current master plan in 2016. We have done this every few years. And this is available online, and this is the table content. So it talks about the different things, going from local to global, what we want, right? This is defining who we are and what we want to be. And why is it important? Because it provides continuity. It balances competing private interests. It protects our public investments, like our parks. It promotes economic development. We want the $10 million hotel to be invested in, you know, $10 million to be invested in Troy or whatever other investments. It provides guidance for shaping the community. It provides justification for decisions. Again, we can't legislate certain things or we can't put ordinances, but if we have better design standards, we have justification for our decisions. It allows us to plan our development to protect valued resources. It allows us to plan our development, to protect valued resources, and one of my favorites on this one is our cluster ordinance, because our cluster ordinance, in combination with the tree protection ordinance, allows us to protect green space so nobody comes in and clear cuts. It is our community's vision for the future through public dialogue, so people have the opportunity to come and offer public comment, and that's why we have public hearings. So basically, a master plan says, what kind of place are we and how do we get there? So that takes us to place. What is placemaking, right? What kind of place are we? Placemaking, as defined by MAP, is the efforts undertaken by private and public entities to create livable and inclusive communities. And the MAP Guidebook, highly recommend it if you want a copy of this, I'm sure Brent can send it to you, but there's a link where the Above Par Planning Guidebook, I thought was a little cheesy, placemaking, accessibility, and redevelopment is what that acronym Above Par stands for. And they talk about planning, about placemaking as part of, an essential part of planning. So there's other organizations as well. Project for Public Spaces, it's a nonprofit planning, design, and educational organization, and they have something called the 11 Principles of Placemaking. And the thing that most recently I got from Brent, again, something that everyone here can go get a copy of or ask me for a copy of it, I actually have it with me. The APA's Planning Advisory Service has a primer on how arts and culture shape places and communities. Tom and I were at a session at the MAP Conference in September where we really understood how important, we have all this diversity and culture here in Troy, we should use it to shape the art and cultural spaces that shape our placemaking. So one of the things that, from the Above Par book, that I thought was really valuable is how important participation from the public is, and the increasing level of public impact is from the goal or the promise to the public. So if you just want to inform them, provide them with a balanced, objective information, you'll keep everyone informed. And if you consult them, then you'll get feedback, you involve them, you collaborate, and then you empower. And I think that we really want to have that point where we're empowering the public so that they buy in, are engaged, and help develop that placemaking concept that we want. And I think this is a really important slide, as we consider what has happened over the four years that we developed the Civic Center master plan. This is something that we could have looked at ahead of developing it so that we knew to engage the public much earlier on. Sort of the way that I was involved in the Troy Futures Process back in like '04, '05, like so long ago, and that was sort of the groundwork for the master plan that we adopted soon after that. I think it's really important. So the thing that I referred to earlier, the 11 Principles in Placemaking from our friends at the Project for Public Spaces. I have sheets here. I want to kind of go into these a little bit more. Sorry, I lost them. Okay. But the community is the expert, because we're the ones that define what it is to be a place, right? And so that's why the community is a really important component in placemaking. And you create a place, not a design, so it's not a bunch of buildings. That's why when I think about our Civic Center Plan, that was a concept plan. It wasn't the design, that was not the final product of what we wanted out of that space in the Civic Center. We also wanted to look for partners, and if we look at our timeline, when Mr. Gibbs, the urban, new urbanist, and the others who went with him to the International Council of Shopping Centers, I believe, they went to present the concept plan to see if we could get partners, because we want people who will invest in the concept of a place that we are trying to create. Another thing that they say is that you can see a lot just by observing. So a lot of the time, we can learn from observing others' successes and failures, and I think that that's what Mr. Savidant and his team that went on the Three Men and a Truck Tri-, Trip, and brought back Carmel, Indiana, and I happened to be in Carmel, Indiana last September, and I was really impressed. And so I think that that's what we want to do, is we want to go and look, and like I went to Alpharetta, and I booked and I saw. The other thing is that we need to have a vision. So there you go, Ms. Cruz, I do want to have a vision. It needs to come out of every community, and that's why that public input and public engagement is really important. It's not just about the brand and the image, it's almost a process to have that vision, it's an ongoing process. And you'll see lighter, quicker, cheaper, that's a hyperlink. They talk about it in the sense that we can do short-term improvements and then build on it, so it's a very layered approach. And then they talk about, and the next principle is to triangulate, and I'm going to review the definition. Triangulation is the process by which some external stimulus provides a linkage between people and prompts strangers to talk to other strangers as if they knew each other. And I'll tell you a really good place where triangulation happens here in Troy, the public library. You'll be in the line with somebody at checkout, and you start talking, or you'll be in a, you know, different section, like if you're there with, I've made so many friends as a mom of young kids at the library, so that triangulation, we need to have more places where we do that. Yogi Berra, my favorite people, always said, if they say it can't be done, it doesn't always work out that way, so. So I think that's true, like, we could say it can't be done, and there were naysayers, but I think we have the ability to create a place in Troy. I think we really just have to have that can-do attitude. Rosie the Riveter was from Michigan, come on. So we get all the different types of people involved, and then you can create places. And then the concept that form supports function. Don't focus on the money, because it will come. If you build the basic infrastructure of the public space, then elements that are added will make it work, so you'll get the, if you build it, they will come, that kind of thing, right? And then the last and final point of placemaking principles here is that you are never finished. This actually was introduced in 1999. I think it's pretty phenomenal, that we are now, you know, really embracing it. It's taken that long to become part of our, or at least my vernacular as a planning commissioner. It was adapted from what they called how to turn a place around, because I think they realized that we need to turn a place around. Other tools from PPS, as you can tell, I like them a lot, the Project for Public Spaces. Identity and image, we need to attract residents, businesses, and investment, we want strong community places that attract people. And they have a really nice graphic of how a city or a region should have at least 10 major destinations. Each destination should have at least 10 places in it, and each place should have at least 10 things to do, and those are layered to create synergy. And I think of our Historic Society and Historic Village as a place in Troy, because we're, if we consider ourselves a destination as a city, how do we make that, how do we list all the different places in Troy that are destinations? And it's really simple, they say four things make a great place, that it should be easily accessible, it should be comfortable, it should attract people, and it should be sociable, where you have that triangulation, where you create places where there's triangulation. And one tool that they make that I really like is this, their place diagram, and it goes from the inner circle, which are the four attributes, the sociability, the uses and activities, the comfort and image, and accessibility and linkage, then to the intangible qualities, and I'm not going to try and read them. But what I like the most as an engineer, I really like the measurable data. I think Krabler will too, because he likes the data too. So that's what this is. I really like the coloring, and just, if you have a chance, again, please take a look. PPS has it right on their website. So this is my new favorite book for planning commissioners, not this one, nor the book from the class, but this one. This is called The Economics of Place. It's from the Michigan Municipal League, it was published, I think, about five, six, at least six, seven years ago. It's called The Value of Building Communities Around People. It was loaned to me by Mayor Pro Tem Robin Baltrumini, and I fell in love, chapter by chapter, I just, I think it's phenomenal. The foreword is by a man named Peter Kagayama, who is the author of For the Love of Cities, The Love Affair Between People and Their Places, and Love Where You Live: Creating Emotionally Engaging Places. And as you can tell, I love Troy, it's my hometown, it's a place I've lived in the most, and the reason being is I'm emotionally engaged with it. I will do anything to fight for our community, and this is what Peter says, place shapes us, place defines us, place is what forms our identities, our attitudes, and our relationships. No law, and I'm going to read the whole thing, even though, because I think it just, it's so meaningful to me. And these are excerpts from his whole foreword, this is not his whole foreword. "No longer is it sufficient to build places that are merely functional and safe. Our placemaking aspirations must be as high and as grand as our economic goals because they are bound together. For Michigan, this shift in thinking is more critical and perhaps even more difficult than in many other places. Change is difficult, sometimes even painful and destructive, but change is essential for growth." I do change management in IT, I really get that concept that change is critical, metamorphosis is what defines us. There's quotes in there also from CEOs for cities, where they say that communities, regions, and states are in a global competition to attract and retain a talented and productive workforce. Increasingly, these talented workers are choosing where they want to live first and then figuring out what their work situation is. Educational attainment is the biggest predictor of success for cities and metro areas today. And we know that whether you liked Amazon or not, the fact that Amazon did not choose Detroit or Grand Rapids shows to us that we really need to focus on education here in Michigan. Michigan in 2000 ranked 18th in per capita, it ranks 37th in 2009, I don't even know where it is today. Michigan 1.0 was really lead it to Beaver, Michigan 2.0 was like Friends. We need to define, through the places, cities like Troy, need to define, what is Michigan 3.0? They talk about whether you cut taxes, and they say, compare a low state, a low tax state like Mississippi and Massachusetts. Where are people going? They're going to Massachusetts. Are you going to loosen regulations? They talk about where is the best innovation happening? See how much is happening in cities with regulations like Seattle, Chicago, or New York? And how the commitment to sustainability versus relaxed environmental regulations, it's actually the commitment to sustainability that will attract the newer workforce. We need to face the hard truth, and this is something I think is really important. Automotive industry and the American mill class were built on well-paying, low education attainment jobs. They're gone, they're gone because of automation and a host of other reasons. And farming and tourism, which we think are next two, are not really great sources of good-paying jobs. We need to attract millennials, I gave you the statistics before. I think placemaking is really important for us to attract them. We need the World is Flat kind of people. I don't know if any of you have read that book, I read it more than 10 years ago, by the man Thomas Friedman, along with Richard Florida, who wrote The Flight of the Creative Class. And those are really important books that are foundations to understanding the economics behind placemaking. And then I just thought I'd take a couple of online documents from other cities. Luna Pier in Michigan and Pontiac in Michigan, both reference placemaking in their planning commission, or plan, master plans, or documents that they've prepared that are publicly available. Luna Pier says that placemaking is about human activity, but that there is a rich and undeniable sense of authenticity that is grounded in the historic context or its unique geographic attributes. On the other side, Pontiac says, if talent is the currency of the new economy, then placemaking is a primary strategy for cities and communities, and talent is attracted to high amenity communities with energy, opportunities, green infrastructure. So going back to what we've worked on for a while, our parks and trails, and making sure we have those pathways. And I will leave you with a person that I've now become a big fan of, she's no longer alive. They always say that I like, some of my best friends always tell me I like dead people, I really, because they said, you know, like Shakespeare, and you know, but here we go. Jane Jacobs passed away in 2006. She's the author of a book called A Death and Life of Great American Cities, and she said, and she gives you hope, she says, dull inert cities, it is true, do contain the seeds of their own destruction and little else. But lively, diverse, intense cities contain the seeds of their own regeneration with energy enough to carry over for problems and needs outside themselves. And I always used to feel angry when I read Richard Ford's book about The Flight of the Creative Class, he always used to say, oh, Detroit can learn from Ann Arbor, you know, it's 40, I feel like Detroit could learn from Troy if we were to use our energy in a positive way. I also identify with Jane Jacobs because she was not a professional like Brent or Ben, she's a mother and activist like me, and I really appreciated that, so that will be my next read. So she has a lot of portable quotes if you go look.
I have a copy from her.
Okay. Thanks, planning commissioner. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
No, it's excellent. Yes.
I liked the use of your creative juices. Thank you.
Your enthusiasm is infectious through this.
Your vision. Effective and creative.
Thank you. We will move to item number nine, public comment items on the current agenda. Anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on anything on the agenda? If not, planning commissioner, comments, item number 10 on the agenda, Mr. Faison.
Just one thing. So my no vote on the hotel was not related to the hotel as much as the process and the information. You raised the point of bringing the expert in to talk in an objective way about the market, not proprietary to that hotel. I'd encourage that, that will be helpful, because of, again, what we have coming, and if, what the app can say is true, if we're at 50% capacity for what we could support for a hotel, that would be helpful to come. So, that's it.
Mr. Taylor.
Nothing, thanks.
Ms. Cooper.
I think that's enough tonight.
Mr. Grant.
Yep, all set.
Ms. Sanzicca.
All set, thank you.
Ms. Redd.
Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Cruz.
No.
Ms. Arneke.
Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Howell.
I really appreciated the conversation we had in 2017 about design. That was interesting and informative for me. I really liked the presentation tonight, and for me, planning commissioner has really been like a very educational opportunity, and I know the last meeting was very big on education at the end, and you've talked about public participation in your presentation. And I would love to see if maybe we dedicated some time on a meeting with less on the agenda to have an in-depth discussion on how we could engage public involvement, or just be able to involve them in a way where they feel less uninformed or not powerful when they come to these meetings, when they, there's nothing we can do, nothing they can do, and their anger is misplaced, in a sense. I think in a conversation like that, because I'm on this commission in an educational sense, that's a conversation I could contribute to more significantly than usual.
Ms. Evans.
Kudos to you, Padma, it was outstanding, and really enjoyed the presentation. I would suggest that Ben, or Grant, get us copies of the book that you liked so much, the new one from ICMA, is that what it is?
Actually, they have a website, Save Michigan Cities.
Okay.
Save MI Cities, I think is the website.
If our budget permits it, I'd.
Yeah, but there must be an updated version of this, because like I said, this is six or seven years old, so if you find a comparable, more up-to-date publication, or revised version of this, I'd like that.
And secondly, I also support Ms. House's recommendation. You know, public participation at even our meetings, and even the city council meetings, sure, we fill the chambers once in a while, but I think what we lose track of is the fact that those are the people who are the vocal ones. What we don't hear from are the other 95% of voters, at least, who vote, and either don't care, or something like that. I think surveys, which I think the council is now planning to do, are a really good idea, and if there's any way else that we can encourage public participation, I think I support Ms. House's suggestion that we look, do an in-depth discussion of how we can increase public participation.
Ms. Grant.
Thank you.
Ms. Carla.
As a professional, I use that term very loosely when I describe myself, Warren Brand. I always like hearing presentations from planning. I always like hearing presentations from planning commissioners and citizen planners, because we learn a lot too. So I, Paty did a great job, and it was an excellent presentation.
Can I just add to Claire's suggestion? I've actually asked a couple of different organizations if they would let me come in and do this presentation for them, because it's 20 minutes of my time or 25 minutes of my time that I would be happy to go and do. So you can think of a classroom event.
I mean, today, I brought this because I know you sell students who are here, this is an assignment we have to do, to observe a city meeting. I'm sure that if you brought the city meeting to them, instead of them having to come here, I mean, they wouldn't mind. So, and then, it's a one-way situation.
But if you can think of anyplace else where I could do this, that it would engage, I don't know if homeowners associations have larger meetings, but just think about it, I'm more than happy. It'll make me better at what I do.
I think there still is apparent organization of the former Council of Troy Homeowners Association.
Meets this Thursday night.
I was just going to say, Cindy Stewart was saying.
Yeah, this Thursday night.
See Cindy.
Maybe, yeah.
Yeah, maybe we want to contact Cindy Stewart.
Yeah.
There's not much on the agenda, I have a copy of the agenda, there's, I mean, it's not a packed agenda.
I think Bill Hootery is going to be presenting, right? On Rose?
I'll have to look. I'll tell you here. Is Bill Hootery? Oh, because they're talking about road projects. Yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah. But it only, it meets quarterly.
Mr. Sodan.
So in terms of engagement, you notice for the hotel, it was a PowerPoint presentation again, and we tried, we're trying to strengthen our presentations in terms of adding an educational element. We, prior to tonight, we tend to assume that everyone knew what a special use was, and we took, I think Ben did a really nice job in putting together PowerPoints to help explain for those in the audience or at home, what is a special use, what's the context of this. So we're going to continue to do that, and that's one way of engaging and informing, and Claire, your points are well taken. Cluster developments. We've seen four now, and I think they're working. 31% open space preserved, the last time, the last time we saw, we saw a potential one today, that's 41% open space.
Nice.
41% of space, so it's another one that is a bit of a work in progress, but if he gets the, he's able to assemble the property, I think he is, it's going to be fantastic. So, and I'm also hearing from two developers, that these ranch homes that we asked them to provide as an option, people are buying them. People are buying them, so.
If you build it, they will come.
Yeah, and Joe Maniachi, I met with him today, he said he's building a model right now, that one of those developments, you can go look at.
A ranch?
A ranch, yeah. So it's not just lip service to placate the planning commission, people want these options. So that's something, and I think the planning commission should be really proud. That was, that was not a cookie cutter ordinance, that was a customized job that Ben worked really hard on, we helped him with that. And I think it's been really effective, and the proof's in the pudding. It's incentivized the preservation of open space. We've seen four of them, we're going to see more of them. It's working. And in combination with the tree protection, I think the planning commission should be very, very proud of what they've accomplished for those two documents the last two years. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's good. Just takes me back to the thought, we were having that discussion of limiting or not limiting the cap on the bonus and open space, and obviously that was a good choice to just leave it open-ended and let the developer be creative and come up with whatever development they want to come up with, and maximize open space, as in this case. Yeah, great job, Padma, and very well put together. Thank you. Any other comments? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.